Good evening, everybody, and welcome. This is, I'd like to open this planning board meeting for the Lakeville Planning Board. It is Thursday, December 10th at 7:00 PM. This is a remote meeting in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open leaning law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 Nobel Coronavirus Outbreak Emergency. The December 10th, 2020 public meeting of the planning board shall be physically closed to the public book to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam. Not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv. And the first item on our agenda tonight is the continued site plan review for 149 Bedford Street. I did notice in my packet, the plans have been a little bit revised since we last saw them. So I'd like to open the floor to Mr. Jamie Bissonnet from Zenith Consulting Engineers to go over those changes for the board.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and board members. My name is Jamie Bissonnet from Zenith Consulting Engineers. If I may, Mr. Chair, I'd like to share the screen and discuss with the board the changes that we've made from approximately two weeks ago when we were last in front of you.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. I'm going to zoom in a little bit. We, obviously, we had the, the meeting, the meeting with the planning board, and then we also had a subsequent meeting with the zoning board of appeals. Zoning Board of Appeals has continued us. They are, they have a couple of things that they're looking into. They've also asked us to look at a couple of items as well. They're going to be checking with the fire department and police department regarding the sign. And I think the majority of the same items that were brought up by the planning board were brought up by the zoning board of appeals. That being said, some of the things that we've done to help address the concerns brought up by the planning board and the zoning board of appeals is, the first thing we did was we, and the big, I think the biggest, the biggest concern was the sign. We moved the sign from approximately 58 feet away that was located in the old driveway down to approximately 184 feet from, from the intersection. And again, that's measured from the pavement, starting here, kind of going across to this side of the pavement, which is our closest edge. So it went from 58 feet to approximately 184 feet. The second thing that we did that was referenced was we made some modifications to the building. I did hear, I did hear a couple of questions asked, both by planning and zoning, and I'm going to go over the highlights of what we did. The first thing that we did was we reconfigured the shape of the building. So Madeline and Liam are going to have to come up with new building plans. But what we did was we changed the building from a 1,480 square foot building, which was longer and thinner. And what we did was we, we changed it to a 50 by 36, which is shorter and a little bit wider. And what we did in doing that was we were able to get from 15.1 feet to the property line in this direction to 19.3. And in this direction, we got from 18.7 to 25.2, which is somewhat of a significant increase in both directions, especially considering right now, the existing building is 1.6 feet off the property line and 12.1 here. So we've taken a reconfig, reconfigured the building. We've also, to reconfigure the building, we also had to go to a slab foundation, that to accommodate the setback to the septic system, but also to get the grading to work in this vicinity, which allowed us to also slide the building back approximately 1.3 feet from the street, which I know was also asked. So now we're closer to 41.6 feet off of the back with a 40-foot setback. We try to be approximately one foot or so to allow us any type of, any type of construction tolerances, if possible. And those are the, those are the big changes that we made in, in the areas that I think needed to be addressed from the last meeting. I'd be happy to try to go over any questions you guys have.
All right. So I'm just going to hold my comments for a little bit, and I'd like to go through the specific board members. Open the floor. Barbara, would you like to comment at this point? Can you unmute, please?
Yeah, sorry. I don't have comments at this time. I'm interested to hear if we have any abutters present, what their comments are. Thank you.
Okay. Peter Conroy, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I'm pretty, I'm pretty happy about them moving the sign as far down as they possibly could. I think they're doing everything in their power to make this work, and, you know, Jamie's doing a great job. So I really don't have any issues with it, you know? I, I understand why they changed the shape of the building, and I'm good, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. And Michelle, do you have any comments?
I want to echo what Pete just said, and I do appreciate that the sign has been moved back from that intersection. It's dangerous. I, I was hoping to see some more of the plantings in that buffer zone closer to where Mark had mentioned the entrance.
I think, I think those show on a different page.
But I didn't see them going as far down as you had requested.
Actually, you know what, Mark? She's 100% right. I did forget to make the, the modification for when we're turning in with the lights in the backyard. Thank you for pointing that out, Michelle. Those will be added to the plan. My apologies.
So while we're on that topic, though, Jamie, you do have a copy of this plan that shows the row of trees?
Yes.
So could you go to that screen so that the, the abutters could see that?
Absolutely.
What's currently proposed? And then maybe you could also show where you would extend that line to with your cursor?
Absolutely. All right. So right now, we're showing giant arbovites in a double stacked row going along the property line here. The end of their house, the bird's house ends approximately here. So we're looking to extend it further, further past their house on that property line. One of the things that was brought up at the previous meeting, Mr. and Mrs. Bird, was any vehicles that may enter from Bedford Street, when they make this turn here, there's the potential for some, for some lights to possibly come through and clip a corner of the building. So we talked about extending or coming up with something that would help eliminate any lights from hitting your, your property, your, your building in the case of cars coming in at night, if need be. And like Michelle pointed out, and I apologize, I did forget to add the, the additional plantings onto this plan, but that will be, that will be done.
Okay. And so is that, do you have anything else, Michelle?
I just wanted to ask, is it a one-level building now?
Well, right now, we're going to, it's probably going to be a two-story structure, Michelle, with the first story being actually constructed and built with the upstairs for now being storage. It'd be the same plan as before. If the second story was ever constructed, then the additional parking and the additional site plan review would be triggered. In this case, it's over 1,800 square feet, which by definition triggers site plan review. The threshold in town is 1,500 square feet.
Okay.
And Mr. Lynch, do you have any comments or questions you'd like to make?
I kind of echo what Jamie and Michelle have said. I was concerned about the signage, and I believe that's been addressed by Jamie. And I also had a concern about the, the plantings. I thought that they should go along a little bit further, but Jamie's just addressed it. So I think I'm fine, and I'd be interested to hear what the abutters have to say.
Okay. Before we get to the birds, I just wanted to, I've got some comments. Jamie, I think you had said, waiting for comment from the fire and police department, and I do have a letter from the fire chief. Chief O'Brien, looks like his date might be a little off on this, but this document has been written to communicate the concerns about site plan for 149 Bedford Street have been addressed and revised. The creation of the exit for emergency vehicles satisfies the needs of the fire department as long as the gate is secured with a department-approved lock and is kept clear of snow and other obstructions. The fire department has no position or jurisdiction in regard, in regards to the position, I'm sorry, of the proposed sign. However, the department recommends that care be taken to provide reasonable sightlines onto Bedford Street. And I assume that's probably from their own entrance, not from the 79 intersection. I assume that sightline thing is directed, Jamie. So Jamie, before I turn over to birds, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't see a sightline issue that we're creating here with the sign or from our site. I think both of them appear to be perfectly fine.
Yeah, it looks like you're the required 10 feet back from the lay, layout of the road.
We are.
Which is what the town's bylaw calls out. So at this point, I'm not sure if you're the only abutters, Mr. and Mrs. Bird, but I'd like you to unmute. If you'd like to make comment, please do.
Yeah, I'm glad that they're going to do the trees along the property line there because that was a concern, definitely, about the, you know, when the cars are coming into the, the parking lot. I'm not sure how far down they're going to be going.
Is it safe to say that that may be 25 feet after my well? It looks, looks like the revised plan, according to your mapping, your scale, 25 feet to one inch, and it would come down to the well. The original trees would come to the well, and it looks like you go another inch down, so it'd be another 25 feet. I'm not quite sure if that's going to cover to the end of the property, where the cars would come in the entrance and turn to go in there. Jamie, can you help me out with that?
I can, I can attempt to. So if, if we're looking at, if we're looking for rough measurements here, this is, this is probably in the ballpark of a little over 100 feet of trees. And, and the reason that I say that is each one of these parking spaces is 10 feet in width. We've got 10, 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, 70 feet in this vicinity right here. They're either nine or 10 feet in width. So just bringing that down, we have, we have at least 70 feet just in this section, and it goes much further up to the front of the house and then further down. We did plan on extending it a little bit. Your property does go all the way back to tamarack.
Yes.
So we, the game plan was not to continue all the way down along the property line, but more up towards the front to, to make sure that, that there shouldn't be any type of a visual impact, to give you some good screening.
Okay. When these are planted, I know that sometimes they come in with shored trees, like full-grown trees. I think, I think it was a six feet that I read, they're going to minimum as planted, six-foot trees?
Six foot in height minimum. And remember, this is showing double row, so.
Which is dogwoods you're going to plant in between there, 10-foot dogwood trees?
Actually, these are actually going to be the, the giant arbovites staggered in this case because they're evergreens. So that means year-round, there'll be a green, we call it a living fence in the civil industry. So we're, we're trying to construct what's called a living fence over in here that will grow and flourish with time. We stagger them because when they're first put in, there's going to be some spacing, and they'll grow into each other. And this, this should really fill out nice, but it's going to start off as, as big arbovites to start with eight foot tall is significant.
And Jamie, just not to cut you off, but.
Sorry.
Those green giants, those things grow like two to four feet a year, correct?
I believe that is the case.
It'll fill in very quickly. And do you think you could get those to continue down to that little spillway, at least? Is that where you'd propose for the sightlines of the headlights?
I think bringing it down to the spillway will probably more than cover what we need. So I, I don't personally have a problem. Madeline, do you see any issue with that? Bringing it down to about this area right here?
No, I'm just confused. We talked about six-foot trees and now the eight-foot trees, so I just want to make clarification on that.
These, I'm sorry, these are six-foot trees, and they're spaced, eight to 10 feet spacing.
Okay, thank you. Yep, no, I don't have a problem with that, Jamie.
And we are going to, yeah, so that'll be probably an additional six to eight trees to fill in this area.
Okay.
Okay, so then those trees that are already there, the large, some, there's some large trees there, are those coming out also to, in order to do that?
Yes, they will. To provide the screenage of an evergreen along the property line, we will have to, we will have to take down some of the existing trees that are in that vicinity, or else we won't be able to plant the, the evergreens.
Okay.
Can I get to another concern, Chairman, on this?
Yes, go right ahead, sir.
Okay. The drain is, Jamie, it's coming in under Bedford Street, coming under your property and onto my property line as an open trench, which it always has been.
Yep.
It drains out onto my property, as you know, the, my land goes up to the tamarack, and I probably got a 25 to 30 to almost 40-foot pond in the backyard there.
Yes.
In the spring, you know, runoff, it's different all seasonal. My question and my concern is, in no way is that going to be altered, where it's going, that water's going to start coming into my backyard further. Do you have an underground pipe that's going to go? I'm not familiar with, with the, with the, with the drainage that you're putting in there, you know? I'm not an environmental engineer on this, but I know it's going to continue to my property and still maintain in the open trench. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, so I, I can, I can hopefully explain it to you. Let me know if, you know, if, if I'm not making it clear. So basically, what happens now is there is, there's a head wall with a, with a pipe system that flows underneath Bedford Street. There is some kind of a catch basin structure on the side over in here, and there is, there's a discharge with a ditch on your property. The state, that's, that's part of the states. They actually have an easement on part of Madeline's property here. What we're looking to do to help reduce peak rate of flow onto your property is we're actually creating an infiltration basin. And what that's going to do is that's going to take the stormwater, and it's going to try to recharge into the groundwater, so that that water, instead of flowing down to you, it will actually get back into the groundwater. What we need to prove is that we're not sending a larger rate of flow towards your properties to exacerbate the situation. There is going to be flow always coming through, the state just discharges there. What we have is, right now, our entire site pitches down towards that drainage ditch. When you look at the contours up in here, just like your, your property, right in this vicinity kind of flows onto us and then comes back and gets into that drainage ditch, all over in here comes down and gets into the drainage ditch. It just flows downhill that way. Over in here, all flows down to that drainage ditch. So what we have to do is we have to, at the point of the drainage ditch, we have to make sure that we're not sending a larger quantity of water at a specific time onto your site so that it will overtop the, the ditch or cause damage that wouldn't, isn't already modeled to happen now. So I guess the answer, the easy answer for you is yes, we have significant drainage out here, and it should, it should not be detrimental. In fact, we're hoping that it will make an improvement to your situation on your lot. But again, we're not altering the state's drainage system and can't speak to anything that's going on upgrading. I mean, if, if flows increase from somebody else's property through this head wall, you could see an increase in runoff for that, and that's way beyond my control.
Mm-hmm.
So what we're, all we're taking in is the small amount of drainage from our, you know, our system here and looking to infiltrate it in the basin.
Okay, thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Do you have any, excuse me, any other concerns?
Um, just, yeah, just one more, getting back to the sign. There was talk that the sign may have been reduced in size. I, I know you said you're moving it down the street, but the size-wise, were we going to?
I don't believe at this point that the size has been reduced based on what we see tonight from what it was. It's just been moved much further down towards tamarack lickers.
Okay.
Is it going to be shut down like at nighttime or dimmer or anything like that?
Madeline, you want to answer that?
I'll let Dave Quinn or Bob Messier jump in at this point.
Yeah, I can make a comment on at least the brightness. The sign does automatically dim to the ambient light conditions, so it will be far less brighter than.
Hang on one second. Who's speaking?
I'm sorry. This is Bob Messier from Daktronics, the manufacturer of the sign.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So like I was saying, the, the, the sign automatically dims as it gets darker, down to about 4% of what it is during the day. So typically, the sign is less brighter than a streetlight or a parking lot light.
And how about hours of operation is one of their concerns?
Yeah, Madeline could probably talk more about that, but as far as the software can blank the sign, have it go to sleep, whatever hours are, are set to, you know, the business hours or whatever the ordinance says that it needs to be.
And so I guess I'd like to speak to that a little bit. One of the reasons you're back with us tonight is because the zoning board of appeals wanted you to make some changes.
Right.
And so you've done that, so they haven't made any approvals.
They have not.
So you're still requiring that. When is the next zoning board of appeals meeting that you would be on the agenda?
Next week.
Next Thursday or Wednesday?
I believe it's next Thursday, Mr. Chair. Let me take a look at my calendar. Nope, I stand, actually, it's next Tuesday.
So Mr. and Mrs. Bird, if you have concerns, you could get access through, probably the clerk here tonight, Kathy, or get included like you did tonight if you wanted to attend the zoning board of appeals meeting regarding the sign and the hours of operation. That is, because of the size of the sign, that's not fully under the purview of the planning board. We'd be more concerned with the location, but the sign is larger, and I, I'm not sure fully about the electronic nature of the sign, if that's a part of the relief that they're looking for. But zoning board of appeals will grant that or condition that. No, I didn't mislead them, did I, Jamie? That's accurate?
No, I, I believe that's probably the best advice. Zoning Board of Appeals is, you know, gonna, is the one, as far as I understand, them and the building inspector are the permitting authorities for signs. Because of the size, we're in front of the zoning board of appeals. So I think specific concerns on the sign would be to them.
Okay. I don't believe there are, but I want to ask the question. Jamie, would you mind unsharing your screen so I can see everybody in gallery view?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other abutters here? Being that there are none, I do have a letter of comments from the board of selectmen. They have concerns about the setbacks, which also would be a zoning board of appeals concern, concerns about the emergency access onto Route 79, which the fire chief had requested. They have concerns about the gate being left open, which I think has been addressed with the lock. They've also voiced some concerns about the Route 79 reconstruction, but I've been told that none of the property that is part of 149 Bedford outside of the layout of the road would be taken or affect the setbacks that are proposed on the plan. Have you applied to the conservation commission yet, Jamie?
We have not.
Do you have plans to do that, or are you kind of waiting to see what happens with ZBA?
Yeah, we, we're hoping to be able to present a full package that we've gotten through ZBA to the conservation commission. Right now, our project is merely buffer zone work, and we believe it meets all the performance standards, so we don't foresee a hard time there.
I guess one concern that I have, and I don't want to drag on the process, and I could help to facilitate that, I think, is conservation, I assume, would probably want some stormwater management, have a peer review, check the calculations on the stormwater management. So I'd, I'd like to initiate that through the planning board if you, if you feel you're going to go to conservation.
Madeline, would you, would you like to wait to give an answer on that until after next week's zoning board meeting? Or would you, what they're looking to do is send the drainage report to an outside consultant to review, which is going to cost you money to have done. So we can, okay, and send everything over, and they can get the process started now? Or if zoning board has us make any changes?
It's the wrong plan.
Exactly. Then any money spent since then would be essentially wasted.
I don't want to waste money, Jamie.
I understand, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, and we, we would like to wait to get the approvals from the planning board and the zoning board, which I feel as though we're on the, the right track. We've met, you know, everything that has been requested of us thus far. I've talked with the building inspector, et cetera, and I'm hoping for an approval tonight from the planning board, and I'm hoping for an approval on Tuesday night from the zoning board, and then we'd be very happy to submit everything to conservation. As you said, we don't expect any issues from them.
So that being said, like at our last meeting, I was a little apprehensive with doing a definitive approval until we heard back from ZBA. That's kind of how we left it at our last meeting, figuring that we would have had an approval by now from ZBA, but they requested their changes. I guess, that being said, I would just want to go through the, the board. I think you do have good support, and I, I don't think there's an issue. I just think, and I've said in the past, it's not this project, but all projects, I'm not a big fan of signing off on something that could be changed again. Like, if we signed off, we'd be having a different plan right now because ZBA made changes, and they haven't approved them yet. So again, in the effort of clarity to you, I'd just like to go through the board and have the board members either voice their support or otherwise for this project. Barbara?
Unmuted. Mark, I do have some, want to talk about how we could condition the project. As long as those conditions were met, I'm in favor. I think it's an improvement over what we have there now. I, I am concerned about the signage and the distance from, from the property. I think it's such a small lot that there's, it's going to be difficult to do much there other than what's been done. So that's my opinion. But I do, my conditions will be, you know, I'd like to see some, some, make sure things get done right.
Just while we're discussing, what are they?
Okay, so on the trees, I would like to know that the, the tree line that's going to be issued over there would be, I'd like to have the type clarified because the plans showed something a little different than what we sort of talked about here. I just want to make sure.
Jamie, before you go on, Barbara, just to be clear, I think there's two different or three different types of trees on the detail set, and some of those trees on that page are the landscape trees around the building.
Thank you. Okay.
And, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie, I don't want to.
No, no, you're absolutely right. That's, that's why.
Privacy row.
Yep.
Privacy row is all green giant arbovites the entire way.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's written on the plan. I also want to make sure those trees are maintained, that they're watered until they get well-established, and we won't. Um, that they're watered until they get well established and we won't have any problem with dying trees along the perimeter. Uh, the, the locking of the gate was another condition, I think we had already talked about that. And the storm drainage cleaning, which may be part of the storm management plan that you're talking about, Mark. But I just want to make sure that when we drive by that property, we don't have, you know, reeds growing up through it. And having a water problem for the neighbors because it wasn't maintained. That's it.
So a storm, a storm water management program?
Yep.
And Jamie, you have something printed on the plan? For storm water management or no?
Um, we have an operation and maintenance schedule for construction, construction sequence. I think the drainage report that we sent in has the, um, operation and maintenance plan. And I am pulling that up right now, just. Mr. Chair, may I share my screen?
Yes.
All right. All right, I do apologize, but here is a scan of the drainage report that was submitted, uh, with our application packet. I'm gonna zoom this down just a little bit.
I, I don't get the picture right now, Jamie, I'm getting like your words on your screen.
Oh, let me see, try it again. How's that?
Yes.
All right, um, so yeah, part of, we have a, in, in our drainage report itself, which has been prepared and stamped by an engineer in my office. Um, we have a narrative, the drainage summary, soil report, illicit discharge statement. A DEP storm water checklist, which is gonna be required as part of the notice of intent. And the hydrocad, which is our storm modeling for pre and post development, then an, an operation and maintenance plan, which is detailed on all of that. It's a hundred and twenty-two page long document. So yeah, that's, that's all been completed. Um, I know that, uh, conservation will, will look at this pretty thoroughly.
Does it, does it make sense to have that peer reviewed, or is that, is conservation gonna be a sufficient review for that, Mark, do you think?
Well, I think to the applicant's, uh, point, if they go to. If it goes to conservation, it, it will be peer reviewed. The, the storm water management will be peer reviewed, but their, their point is it may not go there if they don't get their approvals at ZBA next week. So they don't want us to send it, spend money on it.
Right.
If there are changed plans and then they, they may scrap the whole thing, I don't know. Why spend a couple of grand on storm water management peer review if it's not a definitive plan yet?
Absolutely.
So I, I think that's two more conditions, that if we're gonna condition that, that, uh, pending the ZBA approval and pending conservation commission approval. With a storm water management, uh, review. Uh, do you have any other comments, Barbara? Uh, Peter, do you have any comments and support or, uh, any otherwise? I know you spoke earlier to that, but.
Yeah, I, I mean, uh, this, this project is gonna be a huge improvement over what was there. And I think they've hit like all the, um, they've hit all the marks as far as every, it would, everybody's asked for, so. Uh, I'm in favor of it, I think it's gonna be a, a, a nice, uh, part of the corner. I don't see any problems with sightlines, I know that, that keeps coming up, but. I, I'm trying to visualize it and I, I think the problem's resolved, so.
I'm glad you, Peter, I'm glad you said that, I, I want to actually talk to the sightlines about that. I, I'm, I'm not sure where that comes from. As far as people, it seems like there's a lot of feedback and stuff that we get about the sightlines and the building. As constructed right now, that's there, is how far from the road, Jamie? One point something from a.
One point six from the property line, about three feet from the pavement, four feet from the pavement.
And it's a stop light, not a stop sign. So when it's a green light, you don't need to look left or right unless you hear sirens. So I think the sightline's saying, and especially with them moving the building back, what, nineteen feet? That there's no argument that you could have that sightlines would be an issue, so. I just, I'm, I'm glad you brought it up, Peter, I think that it makes sense what you said.
Yeah, I wish them the best here, so that's it for me.
Michelle?
Um, now, I, I know we talked about the lighting plan, uh, previously, is that something that we're waiting? Would we condition that, or I know you wanted to see that?
And so I'm, Madeline, I'm assuming you, you don't have a lighting plan at this point because we haven't seen it.
I have, um, contacted Granite City Electric and I have talked with Karen. Can't remember her last name, Demetrius or something like that, I don't know, remember the last name at this point. I've emailed her the plan. Which Jamie has provided me in a PDF format. Um, she is working on it, she understands what the planning board wants as far as the lighting, which is for the commercial part and for the parking lot. Um, and she's working on it. I don't have it at this point, I'm sorry that I don't. It was, you know, it's out of my control, everybody, they're extremely busy at this point. But I am planning on getting it from her. Um, and I will do whatever the, you know, the building inspector, you know, what, whatever the, the code says I need to do, I will do, absolutely.
Jamie, I'd like you to make a note on the plan.
Yes, sir.
If you could, regarding the lights.
Okay.
Just on the site plan to make a note that says that a, all lighting will comply with the Lake, Town of Lakeville lighting bylaw. Including all wall-mounted sconces and everything on the building. So it's not just the parking lighting, but, you know, even if they have a, a little light next to the doorway, they can't just. Go pick out the beautiful one from Granite City, it's gotta comply with the lighting, uh, bylaw.
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything else, Michelle?
I guess, I, I mean, I, I do think it's a large building, right now it's, I, I believe it's currently. Uh, one thousand two hundred forty-three square feet from the assessors page, and they're, they're going up to eighteen hundred square feet. And it is currently a one-story building and they're looking to have two levels. So I mean, and I, I, I hear what you're saying with the sightline currently, I think that's the problem, is this, the current sightline is so bad. That, um, a, and knowing that this is still within the required setback. I, I think that's my concern is, is it good enough, is it far enough back to make that large improvement so that it does create? A safer environment, and I know, yes, there is a red light, but. People blow through them, um, so I mean. I'm torn, I think this is a tough one.
And Jack?
Uh, I agree with, uh, Peter, I think, you know, it's gonna be a massive improvement to that otherwise unsightly corner. And I think Jamie has satisfied my concerns about the tree lines and the, the signage, so I'm fine.
All right. Would you like to add anything else, Jamie?
I don't think so, I, I think overall, um, you know, we, we listened to the board's comments, the zoning boards as well. Um, we've tried to improve our submittal the best we can. We believe, um, like Mr. Conroy said, that this is a big improvement over what's there. You know, we didn't come in, uh, being unflexible and, and we would appreciate a conditioned approval tonight so we can, um. Move on to our zoning board meeting, uh, next week and hopefully on the conservation after that.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion? Well. I would entertain a motion. To recommend approval. Pending the approval of the zoning board of appeals. Pending the approval of the conservation commission with storm water management, uh, peer review. Uh, notes on the, the site plan. Uh, related to all exterior lighting, including building lights and parking lights to comply with Lakeville's lighting bylaw. Storm water management operations and maintenance be in place. And the emergency exit gate to be locked. And meet the requirements of the fire, fire chief's, uh, letter, it's Knox adlock. And the row of green giant arborvitae's to be extended all the way to the, uh, state runoff drainage swale. That, uh, already exists.
Mark, can I amend that motion? We need to have something, uh, I'd like to have an amendment on the trees, we'd also like to have those, make sure those trees are maintained, watered until they're established.
The row of arborvitae's would be extended and they would be maintained and watered for. A one-year time period. So, would anybody? So move that motion?
So moved.
All right, I have a motion. Would anybody like to second?
I'd second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll do a roll call vote. Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle? Sorry, you're muted?
Aye, sorry.
Jack?
Aye.
And myself, vote aye. So motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.
Good luck, good luck with the ZBA. Hope that works out, and obviously if it doesn't, we'll maybe see you again with any minor changes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Mark, I gotta step aside for a second, I'm running out of battery, I gotta find a cord. I'll continue.
The next item on our agenda. A and R plan. County Street, uh, and it's number one Julia's Way, and we are meeting with Jim Larson from Prime Engineering. So Mr. Larson, you're muted, uh, but once you unmute, please take the floor. Nothing yet.
There you go. How about now, we good now?
We're good, thank you.
All right. Uh, are you able to see my, uh, share screen of the plan?
Uh, if you share it, we will be, we have, there we go, it's coming, yep.
Okay, um, as you said, what we have here is a, a and R, A and R plan before you. Uh, two abutting parcels. Uh, one Julia's Way, which is down here, which is owned by Christopher and Cassandra Hudson. And this parcel to the north, which is 138 County Street, owned by Stephen and Erica Pereira. Uh, the Pereiras, uh, had constructed a fairly extensive vegetable garden at the back of their property, what they felt was their property, uh, at the time. When it was decided that someone was going to erect the fence, it came to everybody's attention that the garden was over the line onto the Hudson's property. So the Hudson's and the Pereiras agreed to, uh, come up with some sort of a land swaps, let the garden could remain. And everybody would remain happy, good neighbors. Uh, so, we surveyed it and. Creating two parcels, parcel A and parcel B. Parcel A would come out of the Hudson parcel property, be conveyed to Pereira. Parcel B over here comes out of. Pereira and it goes to Hudson. Um, it's a pretty straightforward land swap. There's no changes in a lot of areas, there's no net changes in frontages, uh, no net changes in setbacks to primary buildings. It's pretty much the gist of it, it's fairly straightforward, at least in my opinion. Uh, we monumented pretty much every corner so that there'll be no mistaking in the future where the lines are. And there you have it.
So. Thank you. I, I just, I have to say, that must be some vegetable garden.
It is, it's pretty extensive, I know, I know. It is.
So I, I actually talked to Nathan Darling, the zoning enforcement official, he said this created no additional. Non-conformities or anything, it, it looked good to him, so I'm gonna recommend that we endorse this, uh, A and R plan for. One Julia's Way and what is it, 138 County Street?
Yes.
I'll second that, Mark.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, roll call vote, Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, great, thank you very much, have a great evening.
You're welcome, thanks for coming in, Jim.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, next up on the agenda, item number four is master plan implementation, update on site plan review costs. I saw something in my email. Barbara and Kathy. Is that what we're talking about right now, is the.
Yeah.
Town, we had Lakeville, Freetown, Middleborough, Carver, Rainham, Easton, Plymouth, Stowe?
Yep.
Does everybody have that?
Yep.
Does, everybody has a copy of that?
Yes.
I think it came today, late in the day. Who would like to discuss this?
Well, before we start, I just want to let you know that Michelle and I, just to refresh everybody's memory. Um, took a look at some surrounding communities and just sort of looked at their, uh, their fee structure. And tried to put that into a format that we could compare and contrast. Uh, for the sake of discussion, you'll notice along the top line, we have the median sales price that's been included. I think that's, um, relative, you know, pertinent relative to sort of what kinds of houses are being constructed. Um, both pages can have Lakeville in the left-hand column, just so as you're comparing, it's a little bit easy, you're not flipping from page one to page two. And other than that, I would just open the floor to whoever wanted to discuss it, maybe Michelle wants to take over.
Would you like to add to that, Michelle?
Yeah, I, I think this is, Barbara did a great job starting this off, and. I think this is exactly, you know, where, where we should, you know, be aiming to go. Especially, you know, when you look at the median sale price of Lakeville homes, um, compared to. Rainham, Easton and Plymouth, it's, it's kind of right in between those three. Um, which, as you can see. Those, you know, all the costs are, are higher, so I, I think it would be fair to say, or, or, um. It seems like a no-brainer that, you know, maybe we should just be up at least in that same ballpark with those towns that are in the same median sale price range.
So am I, it's just a single page we have, right?
Should be two pages, Mark. The, the electronic version was one page, but I made it printable so that it would print onto two different pages. If you're looking at it on the computer, it's just one spreadsheet.
Well, when it printed for me, I only got one page and nothing else came out, I have. By town.
Yep.
It goes over to Stowe, I have, I think. Eight towns.
That's, yeah, there, there are, um, there should be a total of eight towns.
Yep. Um, so when I look across the site plan review line. Lakeville has nothing in the box. Freetown has five hundred dollars, Middleborough has nothing.
Correct.
Cover and Rainham have amounts and then Easton, Plymouth and Stowe have nothing.
Nothing that we could find on their website. Correct.
Okay. So in that instance, would you make a suggestion or recommendation? I mean, we're very, we're right on with Rainham as far as the median sale price. And I think we have an amount. I don't know it off the top of my head for site plan review, major and minor. And I think one is, it's like 250 and a thousand and something like that.
Actually, there's another, looks like they're down below. It says site plan review in another row. Okay, minor and major 1,000. So that one's probably close to being in line. I'm not sure why we have two different categories there, though. Maybe it just needs to be consolidated.
Oh, I think I added some, whatever didn't fit in the line just below it because it was bare box.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because I think. I'm sorry, go ahead, Michelle.
I was just gonna say, Easton, if you look at under Easton, just that box below the site plan review, when you, when you scroll over and one box down, it says that, that tiered sort of structure that we talked about. Up to 10,000 square feet. So I know we had, you know, discussed possibly doing a structured site plan review for Lakeville.
Yep.
I, I like that, but I think it needs to be clear. Are we talking, because there's nothing in Lakeville unless it's non-conforming, that's 10,000 square feet if we're talking land. So I think maybe that, that amount needs to be changed. To address Lakeville. Maybe there's a non-conforming or anything under 70,000 square feet, which would be the smallest lot possible. That would be, you know, so it would either be non, pre-existing non-conforming, like the one we just looked at. Or if there was a new subdivision that put in small commercial lots. Because I think with site plan review, for the most part, we're talking about business zone, business development. Although I, I do think that with the new bylaw with the disturbance of over. 30 or 40,000 square feet, whatever it is, we will start to see some residential. Peter, you had a question?
No, just a one acre. The, the bylaw, I think, said one acre, so.
Like 43,000. So, yeah. Yeah, I think we're going to see some of those in the near future where we need to do site plan review on residential one acre or more lots with, where one acre of disturbance. Not to get off track, but just as a heads up.
My suggestion might be is that we go line by line. So we start out with the A and R Form A, compare the different prices across the different communities. And settle upon a recommendation, recommend, recommended price. I don't even know that we will get through all of this today, but that may be a way to tackle it so that we at least are coming, we're, we're actually coming to some conclusion on some of this stuff. And, you know, the other thing I would say is that it's probably worth it to have, you know, I don't know who else would want to see this, but before we made the change, just to make sure that we're. I guess Nate would be the one that would probably want to see this.
Yeah, I would definitely take his feedback on that. I would value it a great deal. So I was just kind of trying to do that line-by-line thing as quickly as I could while you started saying that. And I got to, again, comparing us to like Rainham and Easton. And I got right down to Form C. Where, you know, that's a, a definitive subdivision plan. So Lakeville is $700 plus $100 a lot. And then I looked at Easton and they just have 3,000 plus.
And I think that's when you get into the tiered down below. Michelle, would you agree with that?
Well, that's, that would be site plan. On, on the down below, because then they have separate costs associated with. I'm assuming that's lot size or disturbance would be the square footage. Well, I'm just wondering if the plus might be just $3,000 plus peer review. Because again, the Form C is a definitive subdivision plan. So that would be like a Pauline's Path or. What's that other one on Ross Street? The, the older one, Shamrock. It was like 11, 11-lot subdivision.
Yep.
So I wonder if it's a $3,000 fee plus. The cost of peer review and stormwater management, all those things would be the plus.
For most of the sites that I read, all of the expenses like peer review are automatically pass-through. The difference, like, you know, those are, those are just straight pass-throughs. They're not necessarily going to be articulated on here.
Right.
Every town lists it differently, but.
Peer review would still need to be triggered by us saying we need stormwater management, peer reviewed and. Other, other disciplines. So, all right, so what does everybody think about a Form A, A and R plan? That we're at $100 a lot.
I think we've increased to Rainham's price of $200 a lot.
I agree with Peter.
I don't think it, I think it's a modest increase and it's not going to hurt anybody really and, you know.
How long do you think it's been at $100?
Long time. So I think. Probably eight, at least eight years, at least.
I would say that that's an entirely reasonable amount is if you wanted to. Can we just work our way through this the best we can like this and you jot these things down and then maybe bring that back to the next meeting and star any boxes that we didn't get to?
Yep.
So I, I would agree with Peter at the 200. Does anybody else agree or disagree with that?
I'd go a little higher. I'd go up to 250 just because. You know, when you're looking at Rainham, that's 200. Look at Easton, that's 300 and then Plymouth is 250. So I feel like in between the 200, the 300 lies that 250. When you look at the median sale price of 440. And Plymouth is only 420. I do feel like, you know, it could be somewhere in that range, maybe 250, not as high as 300, but.
Well, so let's, not to make this super complex, but. Using tonight's example and then some of the other A and Rs we've seen where. There's. Four lots created, one piece is a not-to-be-buildable piece labeled on the plan and. You know, there's, there's the plus that they could easily get into one of those more complex A and R divisions of land that, yeah, they all have frontage, but. They're creating the backland and all these weird things. Is that something that?
Well, some, so I would just hate to, you know, we're going to do this. I would hate to put it up to a certain level and then. You know, once we're up to that same level as the nearby towns that. We're no, we're just at the level that they may have been last year. And so, so as their, their fees are rising and ours are just getting to that point where they are. So that's why I thought maybe just going a little bit, you know, giving, giving ourselves a little edge so that we're not just. Making this for now. And I hear what you're saying. Yes, obviously, you know, some of the A and Rs like we just saw should, you know, are still cut and dry. But then again, I think there's so much activity going on in town. It can't hurt.
Michelle makes a very good point. 200 is just basically catching up and 250 is fine by me as well. I, I agree.
Yeah, I'm, and I, I don't have a problem with 200 or 250 either way. It's just, I guess my thing is, how do we interpret when? If this. Let's just say there's an eight-acre parcel and there's enough frontage that. They can get another buildable lot. They're just, you know, said mom and pop want to come in and they're looking for a little retirement fundage or divide a lot off for their kids. But in doing that, they also break off a piece in the back and this, all of a sudden, there's three parcels that we need to look at when they do this. It's, you know, the, the level of complexity is that the number of parcels that they create, not necessarily the number of A and R lots. Is that something, that's something I guess I'd defer to Nate or council. Because when this, we've seen some real train wreck ones. And I think that those ones almost require. Either. Have environmental partners look at it. I know Nate's really good at that, but. It's beyond his job and we're asking him to do more work. It'd be nice, at least if the money went in the town coffers to look at, you're looking at three parcels, not just one. So maybe, again, to you guys' point, move the amount to 250 or an A and R plan. Per lot or something, or make it per parcel and just see if that flies.
Well, when the plans are presented, they are per, per parcel. When an A and R is presented, it's for that particular parcel, not for three, right? We usually, when we get them, it's usually one at a time. Kathy, do you agree with that?
Usually it's for every new lot created, but sometimes people pay because they're changing the original lot. So there's really not anything set in stone on that. So that's probably something you guys should look at, too.
Right. It, it, that's my point, too, is you, so the eight-acre parcel changed. You have to make sure that that didn't create any other zoning non-conformities on the, the eight-acre one. Because maybe they made a little skinny piece in the middle, then cuts off all the backland and now they don't consider that part of the, the square footage and now it doesn't. It's not compliant, but there's a house on it, but they can't, that's illegal. So we're, we're looking at two lots, even though they were breaking off one, we have to look at the one that they broke it off of.
Mark, in the, in the past, I know that, the, the perfect example of that A and R we just looked at, we would charge them two. And of course, the, the price was only $100 each, so people really didn't care. They were just like, that's fine. And, and that was like with Pauline being our secretary, she, she would get them for two. And then sometimes we would only get one, you know, it, it, it's sort of, it wasn't set in stone, really, you know? I guess it was just how people felt. Not, not the best way to do it, but the money was not so high that it, it, it really, people didn't care. They were spending thousands on engineers and then they were like, oh, it's $200. Here you go. So.
Okay, so move it to 250. And again, we'll, we'll go as, as far through this as we can and we'll revisit this in the next meeting. Maybe everybody can have a little bit of time to think about it, too. How about a, a Form B? Right now, we're at $100 for the, a plan. And Rainham is at 500 for a preliminary plan. And Easton is at 1,000. So if you're not familiar, and I don't think we get too many of these. I believe in A and R Form B is a preliminary subdivision plan. Which in the, I think in the A and R handbook or whatever, it goes into in-depth. As to how that gets filed. You have more time to review it and time to comment. And then the developer or the engineer would then make changes and then come back with a definitive, not the preliminary, but the definitive, the Form C. And again, we haven't seen too many. I don't, you, you remember seeing any preliminary subdivision plans, Peter?
Shamrock. Didn't we see Shamrock?
I think, I think we have a, like, so let's say Jamie Bissonette brings us a set of plans. It's not formal. So we usually will look at it and give our thoughts. We have, I know, many times, but we certainly don't consider it that a Form B and say, oh, you know. File a Form B and then.
In essence, that, in essence, that's what's happening, though.
Right. So we're kind of doing it for free, which is fine because you, the end result is it's going to be a Form C and you get your money then.
Well, fair enough. I mean, it, it, I, sometimes you have an engineer that has a track record in town and a rapport. That that's understandable, but I think let's look at adjusting that price to keep in check with. What the rest of the world is doing for when we get the developer that comes in from out of state or way out of town. And the familiarity level is not the same as a local guy with a track record and we feel like. We want to do a true preliminary plan. I think 250 to 500 is a reasonable range. If somebody's going to bring a subdivision plan for our thoughts.
I was going to recommend a little bit higher, so I would, I would be okay with 500. I just, you know, I know what developers, you know, I, I can appreciate the cost, the investment that they're making. This is a drop in the bucket. It's a drop in the bucket.
Or put it this way, we, we do it currently on the Form C and I see Plymouth does it. On their Form B. They do it on their B and C is to do a fee plus the lot. What if we? Moved the preliminary plan to 500 plus $100 a lot?
Yeah, that's good.
So if it's a big one, you know, you, and you review in a 12 to 14-lot subdivision. Instead of a, you know, a two or three-lot private way subdivision.
Yep.
So do, do 500 plus $100 a lot and then on the Form C, what do you think?
I think it needs to be much higher. I think 700 isn't close. I think we need to be, uh, let's see, what, what do we say for Rainham is 2,000? $2,000 down at the bottom. This is where we get into some of the. Got a preliminary plan, roadway. So there's some modifications there.
And not, not to get us off track, but the, the purpose of this, I think, is, well, my feeling is. If we wanted to send the, a whole plan like this. To, we talked about using environmental partners as almost like a planner for us. What if our fee would cover their costs? Is it, if it wasn't really as a peer review, if it was more of an administrative and preparing documents for us? Because we don't have a planner?
Yeah. I mean, I think there's, there's two things. There's the peer review in the case that that's, you know, the, someone's going to review the work the developer has done and that's a pass-through. And then the work that they do for us to support and supplement our expertise and, and the function that we do, that's, that's an expense of, of the town, right? So these fees absolutely should cover what those costs would be.
So that being said, what if we? Just, we'll, we'll continue with what we're doing tonight, make up some hypotheticals and then. Maybe I can send this to. Environmental partners, communicate with them what we're trying to do. Let, ask them if that's a reasonable to cover the costs that would be incurred by them. Helping us through that process.
Great.
And.
Good.
Then even if long-term that wasn't the case, just say we did get a part-time planner for 20 hours a week. We'd be more in check to cover the costs to offset anything. So it's not a big burden on the town. The, the revenue would be. You know, the, the. The application fee in theory would be covering a portion of all of that cost because we would get it in check with what the costs in the real market are. And so. To speak to this, too, I always think about when I go to my Conservation Commission meetings, they have an agent. Who's actually now a member of the board, but we've always had an agent. That goes out, checks on things and it's nice to say, so now it's Bob. You went out this week and you looked at that. Why don't you let us know what you thought? And if we had a, a planner that would do that for us, I just think it would make meetings go so much smoother if we had a 20-hour re-planner that. Hey, I reviewed all the plans tonight. Here's my suggestions. We can all still voice our concerns. We can all still voice our concerns about X, Y, and Z, but. There's a legitimate entity that's doing some of that work that, you know, right now we're doing it.
Yep.
So that, that would be my goal with this too, is to help to cover those costs.
Excellent.
Uh, so where are we with a Form C?
I'm at, I'm at two thousand dollars and a hundred dollars a lot. What does everybody else think?
I said twenty-five hundred for definitive plans, two thousand if preliminary have been submitted. And then. Maybe a plus a per lot. So that it, to kind of come off of what some of them do, if, if they do submit that preliminary plan, they get a reduction on the definitive. Maybe, I don't know if that's too complex.
I like that.
No, I, I think that's fair because I'm looking down below at Rainham and they have. A, a cost per foot of the roadway. Uh, and they also have two fifty for changes. So I think that. It's reasonable. I'm not saying we have to do a per foot of the roadway, but that, that is something else to consider. Thousand foot roadway as opposed to a. Two hundred and fifty foot roadway, this certainly a lot more stormwater management you have to look at. Uh, sheet flow coming across the land and if that's all been designed properly. So.
I also like charging a fee for the modification because I think it's really hard on. The town when the plans are changing, especially at the last minute and trying to get that stuff circulated. So if somebody knew that there was going to be additional hundred, fifty dollar fee for making the change, they might. They might just slow it, slow it down a little bit and make sure it was a little easier the, the first time.
Or that would get you the definitive and, and the preliminary plan and the reduction in costs. You'd see more preliminary plans. If you had a higher fee for changes. I think we have to probably. Define a change. Or at least. We have to all acknowledge that it's not when we say. Could, you know, we, we often request changes because we don't like the way something looks. That's not.
Yeah.
Chargeable change. It's when they come back and say, we extended the road fifty feet, we got rid of two lots, we added a lot, changed the frontage on these.
Right.
So what should be the cost of a change? We're at a hundred now.
I like the Rainham's, uh, language at the bottom, at the very bottom of the page, a modification of a definitive plan is five hundred. And it's a hundred and fifty for a minor modification to a definitive plan.
Not to get. But what's the difference?
Mark, could Kathy answer the que, does, does she collect that? I mean, uh, you know. What constitutes a change and does she ever see that and, and collect it? I'm just curious.
I've, excuse me, I've never collected anything for a change. So.
Yeah, I, I.
Like, are you talking about you're modifying the plan due to something that you've made or they're coming back? You know, maybe a year later and they have to change something then for some other reason.
Yeah, I would say a change would be. That they. Came in with a plan, we reviewed a plan, it's a six lot subdivision with a road that's five hundred feet long. And then halfway through the approval process, or even during construction, they come back and they said, we hit ledge over here. And so we want to move the road and. Extend it and actually we can get another lot. So there's going to be seven lots or what, you know, oh, or maybe the lot number doesn't change, but we had to move the roadway and put a bend in it. So. I think that the change portion would be by the developer only, that them to make a decision that would change the plan of record.
So a modification is one cost, but a minor modification would be a lower cost. So I guess the definition would be what constitutes a modification, what's a minor, yeah. So I think that we should put that up. I'm just going to highlight that for discussion. Because maybe, um. Somebody else has additional feedback.
Keep it, keep it at the minor. And the, the change in the minor change and.
Yep.
Pick a cost. I, I think, you know, I'm trying to think of scenarios that would warrant. A cost difference and maybe, and, and again, that's something that you probably just pass along and I'm wrong, but. Just say, for example, maybe they put streetlights in. And it was on the original plan, but then they changed the lighting. So we had to send it back to the peer review engineer to get the streetlights looked at again. Again, passed along in theory, but something that would require more review. Substantially more review or. Less and, and again, I don't want to charge them in this application fee if we're going to just charge them. Two thousand dollars at a peer review engineer, so that's what the additional review of the streetlights again costs. It's their footnet bill anyway.
Eastern's model looks interesting too, where a minor is three hundred and that we could adjust ours downward. Um, and then a major is, is fifteen hundred, but again, I think that's the, the case of how do you define that? Streetlights to me is something that probably should have been on the initial plan. So if it wasn't on there and it's causing, you know, a whole bunch of extra work. You know, I don't think it should cost somebody fifteen hundred dollars, but. I don't know. This is outside of my level of expertise on that one. I'm not sure.
Well, again, so for, at least for workshop night tonight, let's put it in there as a, a modification and a minor modification.
Okay.
Two fees on it.
Okay.
So then, like I said, if you guys get a good list put together and then we can. Talk to an engineer and. See if that, that's reasonable figures to cover the administrative costs of. Some of that work.
Okay.
So where do we at now? We kind of did the change.
We didn't talk about repeat petitions. I don't know what that is.
What?
Repeat petitions underneath A and R Form C. What is a repeat petition?
Is it somebody coming back that did not get granted the first time around?
Or is it just to keep coming back with incomplete plans, keep coming to hearings?
I'm going to put a question mark by that one. I don't know.
Yeah, we can ask information about it.
Yeah. These special permits, the big one, right?
So right now. Uh, unless I'm wrong. Planning Board is the special permit granting authority for Development Opportunities District and. Drive-through windows. So. What do you want to do for fees on special permits? I think we have a fee lined already with. Development Opportunities District that. I mean, we could look at that as well, but. I guess for your notes in this, I would say seed Development Opportunities District. Review cost. Or, and then come up with a cost if we don't already have something for. The special permit cost for a drive-through window. Because I think those two are night and day.
I don't see the fees in here. Have to look that, look a little further there, Mark.
Okay, so make, make a note of that so we can maybe do some research during the next couple of weeks. This is actually the last time we're going to meet for this type of stuff until January.
Okay.
Because the next, uh, regular planning board night would have been Christmas Eve, but I'm not going to have a meeting on Christmas Eve.
Nope.
I think we have enough going on with the other thing.
Yeah, we, we do have to meet next Thursday. So. We're through special permit with some questions on that. Uh, we kind of already discussed changes, but did you make notes on that one, Bob? Uh, engineer review three, review fee, that is. Either use the term pass through or. Consultant fee might apply or may apply. That's what Eastern uses.
Yes, why not?
Same thing on inspectional fees. So sign permit, we don't do that. Not this board.
Not this board.
So retainer fee. What, what do we see for other towns? And then I don't see.
I think they're broken down, um. No, I don't see them. We don't see that.
Nothing, nothing below here.
If, um. They might call it something different. Well, I was just going to say for, um. Row ten engineer review fee. I think that's where it's going, uh, for the four foot linear, four linear foot. Four dollars per linear foot of road, uh, with a four thousand dollar minimum, uh, is what Plymouth has. Is that similar to that? Retainer fee, I think that almost like the bond that we have on the road.
I think that retainer fee is the fee that we assess, Pete knows more about this than I do, but the, the fee that we assess to the, um, developers when they build. The road, we hold a bond and it's, and it's right now we're doing fifteen dollars per linear foot.
That's right.
Okay.
For, for two years until, um, until town meeting and then it's released back to them.
Until acceptance.
But we're just trying to find a comparison from other towns and I don't see anything.
I don't see anything either.
The four. The four dollars a linear foot in Plymouth equates to about the same amount of money. Uh, a typical road is a thousand feet, so. Ours would be a lot more. We would hold fifteen thousand for that same road, but. They, they must have it somewhere because it's, I, I know it's fairly common. They, it may not just be listed.
This might be something for environmental and partners might have a lot of information for us as well. Or maybe we couldn't readily find that on the public website. It may be, they may know what's more customary.
Release of building permits. Well, prior to us taking fifteen dollars. Per linear foot. We withhold, uh, and release building permits. The, the whole process is based on the value of the roadway and the roadway being completed. So. Uh, I remember when I was on the, just getting on the board, I think they were still releasing a couple of lots from Shamrock. And the purpose of that is. Uh, I'm going to say it's to pave a road that's six, six hundred feet long. You're probably between the utilities, the stormwater drainage. And the pavement. And all the process and the compacting and all that work that goes into that, that road probably costs three or four hundred thousand dollars. So that fifteen dollars a foot at the end. After it's been inspected by a review engineer is just in case there was a sinkhole around a drain and the town. Needed to fix it and the, the builder said, screw it, it's going to cost more to fix that sinkhole than my fifteen dollars a foot. And he leaves town. The town's left holding the bag on that, but we, and I don't know if that needs to be said, but. So we held back building permits, the town, the planning board did. So that the developer couldn't build all eleven houses until. Binder was down and then he could, we released a lot. We still held two more. And until the top coat was down, another certain point. Which. I don't know that that necessarily should be on the town's website, but I wanted to talk about it because that's definitely part of the process. When a subdivision gets put in it, we need to retain, it, it should be based on the value of completion to a certain point. But like I said, if a road costs hundreds or thousands of dollars per foot. And the developer gets it half done and, and he's got three building permits. Town's in a bad spot if we didn't hold any permits back. And he leaves town and didn't finish the road. And he built three houses.
I think holding on to the building permit is more valuable than anything else, so.
Right, that's why we do that initially until we take that fifteen dollars a foot, that fifteen dollars a foot as a token. Just in case fee at the end, that like Pete said, it's about fifteen grand for a thousand foot road. It's not a lot of money when you say the developer is on a thousand feet, if you said. Hundred and seventy-five, hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage up both sides of that, how many lots is that? Right? Plus a cul-de-sac probably.
I, I think it's, it's, it's like, it's enough to have an as-built done. If, if, uh, if the, um, developer skips out. You could get the as-built done, you could get signs put up, um, just the very finishing touches and that's about it.
Right.
Not a lot of repair work at all, um, and then get it passed hopefully through town meeting. That's it.
And a thousand foot road is eleven or twelve buildable lots based on our, the town's frontage requirements. So that's why we would hold back like three lots. At current market value, that's like one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And built in land that you're not, you're not owning the lots, but you hold back the permits. So he can't recover that until he meets a certain. Minimum criteria in the road construction. Just to make sure that the, the road is being built. You know, it's like, it's like paying a guy all the money upfront to do, do something and then having no. Check, stopgap. So. I don't know if that should be printed on that form, but I wanted to talk about it so everybody understands why we do that. So we kind of now get to that site plan review line. Which down below we have the major and the minor. So where do we want to go with those? And what's going to constitute a major or a minor? I, I like the tiered thing. I, I think we eliminate the major, minor. And do a tiered process based on either disturbance or I, I think paved area is a big thing or parking area. We need to clean up our bylaw. So. Gravel parking doesn't count towards.
Coverage.
Yeah, lot covered.
Should, disturbance, yeah.
And then it's uncontrolled drainage too, because it wasn't maybe. Built in the same. Uh, disciplines as a paved area with curb burn and hedge basins. So using Eastern. Why don't, why don't we take this one as homework? And use what's going through the town right now as, just say like the, the tonight's project 149 Bedford Street and the 43 Main Street, using those two as the extremes. And, and there's going to be something in the middle too, to come up with at least a three or four tiered breakdown of what, what site plan review for what we did tonight would cost compared to Lakeville Hospital property. If we're going to do that, is it, and again, if we had a planner and we had to cover the costs that a planner would be sitting on these meetings and going out and checking on stuff, I think that's where we want to go with it so that we're in a better position to get a, a part-time planner. I think the, the smaller one would be a 500 to a thousand dollar fee. Based on how far out of touch we are on some of these costs.
Would a second tier be like a thousand two?
He, like, like I said, right now, Easton for their smallest is 1,500 bucks. And they're tiered thing.
Hmm. All right. Just to keep us moving along because I still need to go eat dinner. Um, so we're taking the site plan review segment as homework?
Yeah, do that. And again, if, Michelle, if, if you can't come up with four, do three, have one in the middle just for discussion at our next meeting in January.
Sounds good.
Uh, okay. So I think that concludes this.
Yep.
Oh.
I mean, public hearing didn't have. And the, we had, the only other things is we had the copies of rules and regulations, free town charges, 20 bucks. I don't even know if it's worth time and accounting to deal with that. Most people print their stuff online anyway. And the public hearing fee and the street acceptance fees, but I think those are all nominal. The other stuff is the important stuff, right?
Hmm, yeah, definitely.
Uh, so next on the agenda is the Development Opportunities District. The gap from three to seven in my packet. Or is this just on the agenda to talk about?
Yep, update.
Kathy, was that just something we were keeping on the agenda to keep?
Yeah, I think you said just to keep it on there.
Okay. So let's keep moving along. We're going to move on from that. Sixth on the agenda is Serpent update from Barbara.
Okay. Uh, so the two big things that I learned at the meeting last Wednesday night. Uh, number one, and I apologize, guys, I don't have anything printed to give you or even real concrete information, but one of the commissioners mentioned he had just come from a meeting and that the Cannabis Control Commission had created a new business option for manufacturers, um, that manufacturers would now be allowed to sell and deliver, deliver directly to the public. What that means is that that community impact fee, which I think in Lakeville is 3%, would be bypassed. So, uh, you know, I don't know quite how, how the commission makes a decision to take money out of town's pockets, but that was, uh, what, what I heard at the meeting. So I thought I'd pass that on. The other thing that's mention worthy, um, from that meeting is that there is a, um, Serpent is setting up a resource for affordable housing management. And I'm not quite 100% sure on all the aspects of what they're going to be doing. They're going to be sending us a presentation which I can share with you. But what they did is they went back through and did deed research and started locating, uh, the affordable housing units that probably should have counted, that weren't being counted. Uh, in the town of Mansfield, they found 23 additional units. Now Mansfield has had a lot more affordable development than we have. Um, I actually think they're past their 10% capacity, but, um, in any event, that, that resource may be available through Serpent and it might be something that we as a community really could take advantage of with the affordable, um, stuff happening around town. That's it.
Thank you, Barbara.
Yep.
Uh, next on the agenda, item number seven is to approve the minutes of meetings from November 12th, 2020 and February 27th of 2020. Uh, does everybody get a chance to review the minutes?
Yep.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Did anybody want a motion on them?
I made a motion to approve.
Second.
Um, could you make a motion to separately approve them?
Yes, make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for November 12th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, Barbara?
Aye. Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack? And myself, vote aye. Uh, motion carries unanimously to approve the November 12th minutes. Uh, next is February 27th, 2020. I'll make a motion to approve the February 27th minutes of meeting.
Can I second?
As drafted. Uh, you can't, Jack, you weren't on the committee.
I'll second it.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second, uh, uh, all in favor, Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And myself, vote aye. And I'm going to have Michelle and Jack abstain because they weren't on the commission then. These are real old minutes.
Is that the last of the minutes right before the COVID? Everything, it's, it almost seemed like it was.
Meetings in March, I think. We had a meeting in March.
I think there was one, it was a real short one.
Um, so next on the agenda, I have old business, I have nothing in my packet. So I'm going to jump forward to new business drafting zoning amendments handout from citizen planner training. Uh, thank you. I think I requested this, Kathy. Uh, this is great. I haven't had a chance to go through it yet. But I, I'd like everybody to go through this, uh, because we keep talking about changes in bylaws and trying to clean up some stuff that makes the town better. I know Barbara, you, you're not happy with like the sign bylaw. And I think that this is an opportunity. If we wanted to actually do something, uh, this would be a big help. So did anybody get a chance to read through this?
I did not.
No, all right. So that's fine. I, I also admittedly did not. Uh, Jack, did you get a chance to already do one of your citizen?
I did.
Training things?
I did, and it was fun.
Riveting?
I did roles and responsibilities of the planning board and the appeals board. It was, it was good. I mean, there was a tremendous amount of information. The audio on it was very poor as far as, uh, the speaker was very knowledgeable, but, uh, his, the audio on it was poor. You had to, uh, pay a tremendous amount of attention in order to hear what he was saying. Other than that, it was good.
Good. And did you feel like you got something out of it?
Oh, yeah, sure. I mean, I learned a lot from that. I mean, it was a trem, it was, you know, al- almost information overload, but it was very good. I mean, I think it's a, it's a well-done course.
I think we lost Peter with his battery or maybe his connection. Okay, so next on the, uh, agenda for new businesses, I have the draft meeting schedule for 2021. Kathy, did you cross-reference this with the, uh, I think it's already been set for the Lakeville Hospital property, the 43 Main Street schedule that we already have?
Uh, yeah, this is still just the second and fourth, so I think those were on the first and third.
Yeah, all these are the, wait. Are these the second?
Yeah.
Fourth? Yep. What are the, um, November 11th and December 23rd asterisk?
So the November, that's Veterans Day. You can't hold a meeting that day. So I'm not sure when you would want to hold that meeting in, in November.
Cause the next one falls on Thanksgiving?
Let me just check.
Or, cause there's only one in November on the.
Like then the following week on the Thursday is the zoning board and then it's Thanksgiving. So, and if you want to go the first, first Thursday or a different day or just.
Yeah, we'll need a reminder on that one.
Yeah. Well, you want to wait till, um, you know, maybe the month before to decide that?
Yeah, yeah, we'll see how it's going. I think keep that as open.
Yep.
I'd like to make a suggestion. In the years past, we have, um, taken the meeting off for October, but it looks like we only have one meeting there anyway.
It was on.
Not October, August, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did that.
Yeah, it looks like we took one off already.
Yep.
Okay.
And then just the meeting in December. I don't know if you wanted to meet that close to Christmas.
Uh, I would say keep it on the schedule and we'll see what we have for business at that point.
Okay.
Uh, and if we can achieve a quorum.
Okay.
You know, if, I, I don't want to just cross them out now. I'd rather keep them and make mention at the previous meeting that we may not have it.
Right, because like I have that disclaimer at the bottom anyway, so.
Okay.
So no action required. This is just, we can agree to it, Kathy?
Well, if you want to make a motion, just that you accept it. I'll post it on the website.
I'll make a motion to that effect. I make a motion that we, uh, accept the proposed uh, meeting, the meeting schedule for 2021 for planning board.
Second. Uh, have a motion and a second. All in favor, Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle? Jack? Myself. Motion carries with a majority. To make the announcement, our next planning board meeting will be on January 14th. Do we know what's going to be on the agenda for that at this point, Kathy? And just, just for the record, it's not anything to do with the Lakeville Hospital property on that meeting.
No, um.
43 Main Street, nothing. Okay.
Nothing right now.
Getting to the end, end of the agenda, but I want to ask, is there anything else that we need to discuss tonight, Kathy?
Not that I have, no.
So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn and wish everybody happy holidays.
I'll second both parts of that. Uh, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Everybody have a great one and we'll see you all next Thursday.
Sounds good.
We'll do.
Good night.
Jack, if you don't have.